All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Next on the menu is to approve the minutes from the April 29, 2024 board meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Board members, before we proceed into our business, I want to take a moment to address in general personnel actions taken by the board. I know this is a topic of interest to many of you and to many of those in our community. I want to clearly state that we have not, cannot, and will not make personnel decisions based on an individual's race, sex, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, or disability. I can assure you that all of our decisions are vetted thoroughly and thoughtfully, being compliant with applicable laws and board policies, and with the best interests of our students, faculty, and community in mind. We are fortunate to have employees throughout our system who contribute greatly to our students' academic success and are committed to our mission to provide every child in our schools the opportunity to learn without limits, and that will continue to be the case. Finally, I do want to thank each of you who have contacted the board and me for your passion and for your caring so deeply about our students and our school system. Thank you. I'll proceed into our business with our first item.
Dr. Freeman, there has been a lot of questions, I mean, to individual board members, probably to Dr. Freeman as well, as to what kind of public statements the board, either as individual members or collectively can make, and what kind of discussion we have on personnel recommendations. You should really be providing us with a legal framework back to this meeting, if that could.
Yes, Mr. Brown, every board employee has privacy rights, and governments throughout this nation, and this Board of Education, respect those and don't comment on employee matters. Even the federal government's agency assigned to investigate employment matters, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, doesn't make public comments. It's unfair to the employee to make public comments. The employees in question here have respected that process and not made public comments. And as a result, my recommendation, and I think every lawyer who represents the government would all say, it's best not to comment on that. It's simply not right.
It's okay, we all know.
Well, that's all of this.
Is it illegal for you to comment on it?
Yeah. Can we just answer something?
Is it illegal for you to comment publicly on Ms. Dressback's demotion?
Obviously, if it's coming from y'all, I'd be happy to answer it, but we really need to restrict the comments to questions from the board.
So it's not illegal? Let me make it clear. I want to be clear. It's not illegal for you to do it? If you wanted to comment publicly, you could.
You will have no continuing comment.
I can comment, but you won't answer the question?
It's a simple answer. Fifty-fifty.
Yes or no?
We have a public comment period at the end.
We're not perceiving the board's decision. Not after.
Mr. Board, is it illegal advice to the board that we not have comment on personnel decisions?
Sure. There's not state case law, but federal case law and state statute that say that you should not comment on sensitive employee matters, and this would certainly be one of those.
All of this. So as their attorney, you're advising them. To not tell us why she was demoted. She has been demoted.
We're going to go ahead and move on, and if anyone has anything to say at the end of the meeting, we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak.
Where on the agenda would that be? Because it's not listed there.
It's not, but we decided we were going to do it.
Prior to the decision?
Let anyone speak in the normal pattern that we normally do at the end of the meetings.
Is this a normal manner?
So we have no input on your decision?
So you're going to make the decision before you can explain the decision to one day?
We just need to move on with the agenda, and then anyone that wants to speak will have an opportunity to do that.
You're going to make the decision before you allow public comment, correct? You're going to make the decision before you allow, you're going to vote before you allow public comment, correct?
That's correct.
This is democracy.
Inaction.
He must be talking to a terrorist.
Can we speak to the process? Can we speak to the process of life? I'm really involved.
Hey, hey, hold on, hold on, hold on. I know a lot of y'all, okay? I do, I know a lot of y'all. I knew some of you a long time ago. I know some of you now. A lot of you out here, the people up here, and we're simply asking a question, what happened? And we're not getting an answer. She's getting demoted, and y'all are saying, we're not going to tell you why, but here's our decision. And that's not, that's not the right way to do it.
If it's not because of something that's related to her sexuality or identity, then is there a reason that you felt like our children were in danger in some way? Because we have a right to know.
Yeah, are the kids in the alternative school not in danger?
You really want to make all the sort of questions from the public?
I'm going to move.
I know you are. I don't blame you. That's silly.
Recommend the board through the transfer of Lauren Dressback from high school at the alternative school effective May 3, 2024.
Why do you recommend that, Peter Ty?
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation.
She drew up here, y'all.
Transfer Lauren Dressback to the alternative school effective May 3, 2024.
What are you covering up?
Do you have a motion to approve? Second?
Really? Come on.
Have a heart.
All right, get yours.
You graduated.
With any further discussion?
Who's second? Wait, who's second?
Get anybody out of our way.
Second, all in favor?
My child goes to high school around five.
Shame! Shame on you! We can at least know who voted. Yes.
So by hands, raise your hand. Who voted for?
You put it up. You said, somebody said, "All in favor."
Board members, if I may, I'd like to address the police officers in the room.
Lawyers speak.
And that the House of Representatives under the Open Meetings Act, who will have the opportunity to make comments at the end of the meeting, cannot disrupt the meeting. And ask those citizens who are passionate about their position to please speak when the public is allowed to speak, but allow the, allow the Board of Education to conduct its business. The board is respecting your right to speak?
Absolutely. Look, the business looks nefarious. Doesn't look like good business.
If there turns out to be an interruption to the meeting which prevents us from operating, from operating according to law.
You're on the board right now. Are you on the board, sir?
All right, we're going to move on to item D.
Can we know?
That is part of our rights.
I recommend the board read the contract for Kim Paulson as principal of Vestavia Hills Elementary, Cabah Heights, effective May 3.
I heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve Kim Paulson as principal of Vestavia Hills Cabah Heights, effective May 3. Do you have a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Action five is personnel. Board members, I recommend the approval of personnel actions as submitted.
I heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the personnel items that were submitted. Do you have a motion to approve?
Shameful.
Shameful. Shame on you.
All in favor?
Gosh, this is so horrible. You all want to try to close this under the rug, but we are not going to sit down. You're trying to close this out, but we are not going to forget what you have done.
That the individual desiring to speak shall stand and give his or her name and their address. The presentation should be as brief as possible, and no doubt shall such address receive three minutes. The speaker may make statements about their particular concern with school operations and programs. In public session, however, the board will not hear personnel complaints against particular school personnel or against any person connected with the school system. Other meetings, other meetings are provided whereby the board may consider in disservice of legitimate complaints involving individuals and employees within the system. Further, the board does not typically respond to comments during public participation.
My name's Jim Whizzenhut. I live on Altar Glen Drive in Vestavia. Lived in Vestavia for 25 years. Had two kids, graduated from Vestavia High School. I have a question, and I'm not asking for comment. You voted up here, you did a motion on demoting, I will say, that's my word, Ms. Dressback to the alternative school principal, and you asked, "All in favor?" I would like to see the hands again of who voted in favor. Does that ask you too much to know how my board members voted? The boards will not respond. They won't even tell me how they voted. They won't. Let me look into these cameras. The board will not even tell us how they voted on demoting Ms. Dressback.
What were you saying though? Will it be reflected in the minutes?
I couldn't hear. This man didn't ever said a word. I kind of heard, did you vote for or against?
Again, Mr. Whizzenhut, the board can't.
That's a secret vote.
Do you know what she was voting in?
I'm asking you, is it a secret vote?
You saw the same vote everybody else did.
Well, we don't know who voted.
I'm thinking about it.
Is it recorded in the minutes?
Look, I was here, Bundy, and I may have tried to make my case, and I was hoping I would ask questions to get answers, and I didn't. I was told to email. I emailed Superintendent Freeman, got no response 48 hours later. I followed up today, got no response. You would not be in this situation and talk about speculation if you had handled it correctly to begin with and let the people of the voices in Vestavia who are asking why Ms. Dressback is being disciplined, because there's no other way to look at it. If you're transferring her from one of the premier schools in the state to an alternative school, which is a totally different animal. So she is being demoted for some reason, and we will find out what it is. I'm not letting it go. I have contacts at the TV stations, I have contacts in the media, and you can give me that little smile, Mrs. Freeman, but I'm not letting it go. Because if she had done something that was criminal or put the kids in harm, you would not allow her to teach, to be principal even at the alternative school. So something else, I believe it's because she's homosexual, because it happened, the timeline, it would take a full, now, I could be wrong, and if it turns out I am, I will come to this board and speak again and say, "I apologize." But it's just weird that she's, she's getting a three-year extension on her contract, a few months later, she announces she is gay. God help us with some people in Vestavia when you say you're gay. And if you've got a girlfriend or boyfriend of a different race, God help you even more. So something's going on, and I heard your speech about, I heard your speech about, I heard you give the spiel about we don't discriminate because of race, religion. I take that with a big grain of salt. I will continue to follow this. I will continue to urge the media to not stop until you get answers from this board, which they're not going to give you. This is supposed to be a democracy. They work for us. Our tax dollars pay their salary. So you owe something to us. You're the one that caused this, Dr. Freeman. You could have answered this back in March when she was hauled off campus and not allowed anybody to do it. Now, we may find out it's worse than it is, but if that's the case, she would not be principal at the alternative school. That's all I got to say.
Vestavia Hills Board, I have many members of my church who are members of your community. My name is Reverend Julie Conrad. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church. I represent many clergy who could not be here tonight, who would stress you to say, "Why does it matter who this woman loves?" She was a great principal, she is a great principal. The kids, the parents, the community love her. Can you not see that? Why are you punishing her in this way? You are opening Vestavia Hills open to all this criticism, and all we're asking you to do is love your neighbor as much as you loved yourself. And you would not have demoted yourself over, you know, sharing with someone else who you happen to love in this community. This is not okay. This is 2024, and we, we love one another, we love you, we want the right thing to be done here. And why can't it happen? You had an opportunity back in March to have the right thing happen, when a complaint came to you, Dr. Freeman, that said, "Oh, my gosh, one of our principals is gay." The right thing to do was to say, "Isn't it wonderful that Principal Dressback has someone to love?" And then you could have moved on with your life and moved on with the important business of doing what is best for the children and youth of Vestavia Hills, instead of making this whole thing happen by dragging her out of the classroom, by, by keeping her away from the classroom for so long, and then very clearly demoting her to an alternative school. As a former teacher, I would know exactly what that means, and as board members, you should know what that means. This is not a promotion. This is not a glorifying her. This is a, you are sending her a message that in Vestavia Hills, it is not okay to be LGBTQ. And I'm telling you, on behalf of all of my folks who are here, on behalf of all the clergy that I work with every day, that it is still okay to love whomever you love, and you should not be punished at your job because of who you love in 2024. I'm just asking you to put yourself in her shoes. You've already done the deed, and now you're going to face the consequences. And I'm going to remind the crowd that there is a consequence here for all of these people. I want you to come get pictures of every single name, and I want you to vote them the hell out.
Last year for all of you.
I'll talk. I think I'd like to talk.
Anyone out? Yes.
People grind my teeth, but I'm nervous too.
We have to vote the city council out. They're the ones that are appointed. We don't get to vote for the other.
Oh, that's right. Especially if you're a Vestavia Hills resident, you need to come up here and speak, please. Parents, grandparents, children, whoever, please make your way up here.
So my name's Julianne. I was Julianne Jowers. When I met Lauren first, we were in little, we were in school together. I was in school with Joslyn, in school with a lot of you guys. So Lauren was always a lot smarter than I was, and she was a much better student. And I really looked up to her, because she was a friend to everybody, but she was just really a hard worker, and I admired that. And we grew up together, but we were never really close, and a lot of that had to do with just, I played soccer and did other things, and while she studied, and she did things like National Honor Society, and, you know, good things. So we went on to college, and she went on, and she came back to University of Montevallo when I was graduating with my undergraduate. She was getting her master's, and she told me that she was going to go on and she, what she was going to do, and it's pretty much exactly what she's told, what she has done. And over the, over the years, you know, I've had many times to come across Lauren. Once there in Montevallo, and then again, we raised our children at Vestavia Hills United Methodist Church together, and I would sit right in front of her every Sunday. She didn't miss. We didn't miss either. But she had her kids all dressed up in that service, and we, we didn't go to the big service. We went to the contemporary service, not because of the music, but because we really appreciated the ministry when Sherry spoke, and she was the one that did that service. So when, when Vestavia Hills United Methodist Church decided to disaffiliate, she, they kind of took a lot away from some people here that, that really felt at home at that church. And so a lot has changed for a lot of people in this community, and that is a huge change for Vestavia Hills United Methodist Church to disaffiliate. How do these people feel in our community? They feel lost. They feel lost, and they feel hurt, and it's just really sad. So today, I'm in Diplomat Deli. I went by, I'm not probably over my three minutes. Never good at this. So I went into Diplomat Deli, and as I was leaving, I had lunch with my friend Jenny and some other people, and as I was leaving, I bumped into Lauren Jean Dressback. Same Lauren Jean Dressback. And I go in there, I order the Squire, I love it. You know, it's the same sandwich, it's always been the same sandwich. I was here in 97, I think in the 80s, the Squire was still the Squire. I like the Squire. Everybody here probably has a sandwich that you eat at Diplomat Deli, and I'm sure Lauren does too. As I was leaving, it occurred to me that she was walking in there to eat the same sandwich the same way that she has always eaten a sandwich in that building, but now she is going to be at the alternative school principal. And everybody here that went to Vestavia knows that you do not want to be in alternative school, a minister or student. What you do speaks so loudly. You tell these kids that they need to do the right things, but then you show them what you do to people who do the right thing. I pulled my, my kids out of the school.
Amen.
Shameful education.
It's a disgusting act on each one of you that voted for it.
Okay, I'm a new, my daughter's just in kindergarten, so this is a whole new world to me, but my name's Sandra. I went to Vestavia, graduated from there, and I live in Cabah Heights. Sandra Gonzalez. And my, my daughter started kindergarten, day one, Ms. Dressback called me because she was having her dad drop her off for divorce, and she was having issues, and she called me, and on day one of school, and there's like so much going on, like she saw my daughter, and she advocated for her, like, since the first day, second day, she called me again. "I want to have an emergency EDP, or emergency special ed meeting." Within two hours, her, the vice principal, the counselor, teacher, the behavior specialist, all these people were in a meeting, and I have been blown away by the Vestavia system. Like even being a graduate, I had no idea, like, all the resources and what a great school it is, and Lauren just always, it's, as a single mom, it's extremely comforting, has been extremely comforting to know that the principal is so involved and fighting for our kids and out there every day waving to them, rain or shine, dressing up in the costumes, like she is a bright light and is clearly missed, and, and also, Donna, like, I just want to know, why haven't the parents been told anything? I just noticed she wasn't in the carpool line, and I'm like, what's going on? Like, where is she? And there's no communication. I also emailed you and explained my whole situation and how great she's been, professional, so professional, so kind, so compassionate, like, just empathetic, all the things, and I think it's a huge loss to Cabah Heights that she isn't the principal anymore.
My name is Holly Hamm. I was, I live in Crestwood now, but I grew up in this community. I was a teacher from 2002 to 2013 at Homewood High School. I'm not quite as relevant here, except for the fact that being gay meant that I had to be a liar at work. I would rather not be a liar in my life. One of the reasons why I left teaching and I've pursued other careers is because the pressure of never, ever, ever being able to share what your life is like at the Xerox machine with the other teachers. To, to listen and communicate and participate in everything except for the very core of who you are, day in and day out, to take the risk of coming out to somebody knowing it could be in your career every single day of your life, after 13 years of being a liar? I needed to quit. I have a master's degree and national boards and the highest AP grants in the state for 10 years, and I left the classroom, because I don't want to be a liar, and I don't want to be forced into lying to keep my job. It's absurd, and I thought things were better, and clearly they aren't. This was, this was the thing that I was terrified of. This is the thing that I lived day in, day out, with the terror of being not only outed, because when I was a teacher, it meant more than just losing your job. It would have meant being disowned by your family. It would have ruined my partner's life and her experience. The repercussions on the individuals that this type of thinking has is devastating. It is devastating, and my true calling and my true gift goes unplayed. I don't get to play that hand, because I'd rather be true to myself and an honest teacher than a liar in front of kids every day. I wanted to be the teacher I never had. Nobody gets to be the teacher they never had when they're gay.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Morton. I live 12309 Vestwood Drive, and my kids go to Cabah Heights. They're, I have twins that are in kindergarten, and they've also attended the preschool program. And I am here, I want to say I'm here on a Thursday because I'm, I'm a rights activist. I need to do that more often. I'm here because my favorite principle that I've ever experienced was unfairly taken away from our kids without any explanation. My kids have struggled with COVID, and they were just delayed. I was so nervous. And Cabah Heights is an amazing experience for them. The preschool program was amazing, but kindergarten is still, there's, the training rules come off, the class sizes get bigger, and I was so scared. They just, they can be a lot, and I didn't know how their actions would be interpreted, how adults interpret tiny people's actions in adult ways can really stigmatize them for the rest of their life. And there was Lauren out there the first day, and I was like, what a great vibe to set off the year, never expecting that she would be there every day. And that Lauren doesn't know me. If she sees this, she won't know me, but she knows my kids. She knows the names, she knows all of their names. And that was not something I was expecting from a principal. I went to a private school, very small class, and I was nervous about what a big system meant for my kids, if they would get lost, but truly, Lauren and the way she led her teachers and the way she loved her kids took all those years away, and I was able to just drop them off and know that quite literally they were in the best place for them. And I knew because she had a, she was so clear about what Vestavia ethics were. My kids coming, they don't know a lot of words, we're still working on it, but they know what grit is, and that's because of Lauren, and it's because of their teachers, obviously. Shout out to Ms. Wyatt, Ms. Green, love them, but Lauren did a great job. She was in their IEP meetings. She pulled me aside and was talking about how she's been reviewing their progress. She knows my kids, my kid knows her, and they've missed her, and I'm so sad that other generations won't, that parents won't have that ease, and that kids won't get to experience her. I truly believe that this was a safety issue, because your response was as if it was a safety issue. It was abrupt, right? This isn't an end of the year decision. And if it wasn't a safety issue, I would assume that you would respond similarly to a principal that was caught on camera making fun of a student. If it's not a safety issue.
I don't want people looking down.
So if it's not a safety issue, then we need to understand the, the process at least, if not the information that it went through to get such an abrupt and intense response. And I'm assuming that we don't care at all about the kids that are in this alternative school, and that you know that, that she's not a danger to them. So maybe if you can't, just consider this. If you can't give us the details, just explain the process. If you spent hours in a room, then we deserve to know what went in, what questions were asked, what due diligence went into the decision.
Hi, my name's Natalie Zogby. I live at 3834 over to Manor Lane, and my son is in kindergarten at Cabah Heights Elementary. And I just want to say, from the moment that we stepped foot on campus, we have felt warm and welcome. We were very lucky that we came from a private school that was very small, very inclusive, and very progressive, and did everything to take care of our children. And I am very, very concerned as to why the principal was removed after her three-year contract was extended, and we've been given no information. I think that we have a right to know that. Sending our children to school in 2024 is one of the most dangerous places we can send them. And by not being transparent and not sharing, you are putting us at risk, and you're withholding information. you are putting us at risk and you're withholding information. And I think that we have a right to know because there is one less person at our school that is saying hello every morning to the children by name. And that's what we need, is we need a community and we need people who protect and support our children. So thank you for your time, and I will continue to follow up until we have more information about how we can keep our kids safe.
Hi, my name is Drew Templeton. I am the parent of a student at Vestavia Hills Cauaba Heights. Today, I watched you harm my child's education. My child loves Lauren Dressback. And you know what? Lauren Dressback loves her. She knows her by name. When I told her that Lauren might not be her principal anymore, her shock and upset was palpable.
Are you providing grief counseling?
As a parent in this school system, I need accountability. I need to know the whys and wherefore's of the major decisions impacting my child. And if accountability can't be achieved, then I need a new board.
Hi, I'm Mary Wood. I live at 3987 Nachos Drive. I have two kids that go to Cauaba Heights Elementary. We had been there from kindergarten on. When we first started, it was Dr. Huntsberger. Then Ms. Tinker disappeared. Now Ms. Dressback is disappearing.
She was there too.
She went to, yes. That was, that was, at the end of the year, we finally found out what happened to Ms. Tinker.
She was there for three months.
So I have two special needs kids myself. Lauren has always made them feel great about themselves. And you guys taking that away from them now shows them that diversity is not okay. And we must go with whatever blinders you guys have. Because diversity should be across the board. It doesn't matter who you are. As long as my kid is safe, I want that principal there. If my kid's not safe, why did she leave?
Why are you questioning the children?
This is quick. My name's Alita Maniscalco. I taught in this school system for 26 years, and I. I was a teacher a year when you're two. I have two things. The first one is, have y'all noticed a word that has come up with almost everybody that stood up here? Or with everybody that stood up here? It's the word love.
Amen.
No matter what else she did, that woman loves children, and I have known her since she was a child. Her mother and I talked together. We were extremely good friends because we did the yearbook together for 10 years. And as an adult, I have, and I've told her mother this countless times, I followed her on Facebook because I was so impressed with her as a parent. If this, if, like they're saying, if this is something where somebody was endangered, if this, my, this is my other question. Will Lauren Jean Dressback, I still call her Lauren Jean, will she know the reason that she was demoted? That she was carded, not carded, but that she was escorted off of campus and not allowed to return, even to her own son's track meet? Unless she called and got permission? Now, if she's done something that bad, is she going to know? Somebody tell me. You seem to be the one with the answer. Does she have to know? Is it illegal for you to, to, what's the word?
Answer her.
Is it illegal for you not to give her an answer if she asks?
Take it to the mic. We can't hear you.
What do you say, sir?
I'm done. So answer my question. Will Lauren Dressback be told the reason for this action? Answer her. Oh, well, not answering the question.
This is not going to look good on a resume for anybody sitting down.
Please, nobody, allow the speakers to speak, and please don't interrupt them.
And you know what? If you can't answer that, I didn't ask anything about this. Okay, this particular case. In your bylaws or whatever you have, she gave me her time.
Yeah.
In your bylaws. In, no, in your, no, you don't want to answer this.
That's right, and I'm not going to answer the question because she's in.
Can I have a copy of my bylaws? Do your bylaws say that you have to give any employee, like Ms. Dressback, a reason for action that's taken, like being transferred, demoted?
Wait, I need to pause so I can repeat.
He heard me.
Do I have to actually say if you'd answer it?
We can't answer any question.
This is not a part of the meeting where a publicist is allowed to make public comments. This is not allowed in the part of the meeting where the, where questions are thrown and board members and the board attorney. When is that, sir? When is that, sir? When is that, sir?
Okay, so.
When is that, sir? When do we ask questions where you will give answers? When is that, sir?
I apologize for not wearing green. I do think that Dolly would love the background. Please forgive me.
My name is Taylor Hill. I live on Badham Drive, right across from the slice. And I have lived here since 1991. I'm, I'm here in support of Ms. Dressback, but something has really rubbed me the wrong way, and I just want to put it out there. It might rub you the wrong way when I say this, but trust the process. I don't like all the negative comments about alternative school. Every student is important, even the ones who are in alternative school. It is a known fact that alternative school is a demotion for a staff member. Sure. My, I would like to ask a question that I think you might be able to answer, but maybe not because it's simply a question. Can you tell me how, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that as petty as it sounded. I really didn't. Can you tell me how many students are in the alternative school? Less than 100, less than 200?
That's interesting.
Can I ask, is it less than the amount of children that attend Cauaba Heights? I'm assuming it's less than the amount of children that attend Cauaba Heights, by a significant amount, is my assumption. If I'm wrong, I'm sure somebody will blast me on Facebook and let me know. So where I'm going with this is, yes, the children in the alternative school will be so lucky to have Ms. Dressback. However, the amount of children at Cauaba Heights that she will be making a difference if she stays makes up all the difference. And the last thing I'll say, well, the main thing was, I just want everyone to know that the kids at alternative school are just as wonderful. I don't even know them. I don't work in this school system. I work in a different one. But like, that's my main thing I want to get across because I'm kind of getting tired of the, the, you know, alternative school. They're wonderful kids. They're just as good as anybody else. And any staff member should be lucky to work with them, yes. But it is a demotion. She's incredible, and she should be with the kids like that have, the, the more kids, I'm totally lost my brain now, but you know what I'm saying. Thank you. As many kids as possible. Thank you. And also, it's not too late to change your vote. Open it up. Change it.
My name is Catherine Gary. We have just relocated to Vestavia from Louisiana and really didn't know anything about this. Hadn't heard about her until about two days ago. And somebody I saw on TikTok was talking about it, so I decided to do some research since we're trying to decide what to do with our kids. And, you know, there's not a lot of information except glowing recommendations of this principal and how wonderful she is. And the only thing, and you say you can't answer questions. I'm also a lawyer. You can, you choose not to. So don't say anything. You can always answer questions. So stop being that. Anyway, so when I told my kids we were coming, why, why are we going? We're not in school there yet. What's the problem? And I said, what happened in Birmingham? We learned about in history. And they said, oh, the Civil Rights Movement. Yes, it was the hub of that. Yes, you're correct. And I said, and you know, when you teach your kids about history, you always say, if I'd been alive then, I would have been with them. I would have been protesting it. I would have been doing the right thing. But sometimes, as a white woman, comfortable in her life, that's an easy position to stay. Because when the time comes, will you really? Will you really do what is stand up for people who need your voice behind them? And that's why I'm here. And that's why I told my kids I was here, to give voices and to tell you that you are doing the wrong thing and that you are on the wrong side of history. And you will be embarrassed and mortified when you have to explain to the, this to your children in 20 years when they are old enough to understand what happened here and the choices you made against this woman who no one has anything bad to say. You are on the wrong side of history. And your children and grandchildren will be ashamed.
I'm Tim Price. I live in Cauaba Heights. You don't need to know my address. Now, your name is, sir?
Yeah, what's the lawyer's name?
Yeah, your name? Oh, you don't want to answer the, oh, you can't answer the question. Is that it? Are you an attorney, sir? Are you their attorney?
It's public information.
Now, my kids went to Cauaba Heights. They weren't there when Ms. Dressback was there. Can't believe this guy. Okay? But they went to the high school. They went all through Vestavia Hills High School. Guess what? They're gay. Both my kids are gay. You didn't throw them out of the school, did you? Because you got to take care of the kids, right? That's what Ms. Dressback did. She took care of the kids. She did her job.
Amen.
Now do yours. You got time. When's this meeting over? You got time. Make it right. Now, here's my next question. Y'all are religious people, right? I know you are. I know you are. I've done my research on you. One of my favorite movies, it's a stupid movie, and it's called Joe Dirt. One of his favorite sayings is, is this where you won't be when Jesus comes back?
Mr. Attorney, at least the other guy had a plaque that gave his name.
He took his name.
Yeah, he got the balls.
Hey, I'm Pam Smith. I live in Cauaba Heights. Live in Grand Highland Apartments. I'll be quick. I just want you to see two of the kids that Cauaba Heights has changed their lives, particularly my daughter, Boston, because she's non-verbal. As most of you know, that there's been all kinds of, yeah, see, she loves Lauren too. As most of you know, the stuff that happened at Dolly Ridge, when you have kids that don't have a voice and you have to rely on someone to just tell you how their day was and how scary it was to go from such a confident and caring place of United Ability to go into a public school. We had the most amazing first day with Dressback. She spent a lot of her day with Boston. It was so wonderful there that my son wanted to leave his school where I was working to be able to go to Cauaba Heights and develop such a wonderful relationship with Dressback. You're not going to give us information that we want. I just want you to see two faces that are going to be impacted because of your decision.
Good evening. My name's Representative Neil Rafferty with House 354. While this is not my district, and this is normally I would have to, I would give the courtesy to the, the local legislator here. This has become an issue that I felt compelled to drive straight from Montgomery. I hadn't even been home yet. After a long week in Montgomery, to come up here and say, where, what, where are the answers here? What's the problem? I think that, you know, what we've heard, and I was listening to the livestream on my way up here, been paying attention to this story a little bit, been hearing from the community here, the folks that do live here, the folks that do have kids and students here who want their principal back.
Amen.
That's what I'm hearing. And I'll tell you this, the secrecy and the, the reluctance to really give a reason for any way, any positive, your, your, the secrecy leaves open a vacancy that is going to get filled in with, with what you're hearing here today. Because you're not being transparent. You're not letting us know.